I'm sure. Well, it's the mention, all right?
Eric House?
Here.
Mr. McQueen?
Here.
Mr. McQueen?
Here.
Mr. Barrow?
Yeah.
Mr. Ruth?
Here.
Mr. Amero Dassin?
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News and Courier News file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand in place. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Borough Hall. It is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their name and address before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance resolution or motion. All right, we have a bunch of presentations tonight. We have another Eagle Scout, I think this is number eleven this year. So we have a proclamation for Alec Hoskins. I don't think you have to read the whole thing, no. Then we will be sending to him. I think that was the eleven, I think we had ten before that. So congratulations to Alec Hoskins. We're skipping the hometown heroes, because Tim couldn't be here today, but I guess we'll do that November.
He's still hometown hero.
That's right. Jeff Hammond is here to talk about sustainable Jersey and our Silver Crown Nation. Many thanks to you and the Green Team for putting in all this work to get us a silver.
That's part of what I want to do is just acknowledge everybody, not just the Green Team that did all this, but I think you probably got the email today. Hopefully, we got the email today that it was officially recognized that we have now been elevated to the Silver status.
Yes, you were bronze, right?
We were bronze.
Right.
Bronze was beginning, and most of the state is bronze, actually. And I guess eighty-one percent of the municipalities in the state participate in some fashion in sustainable Jersey, but less than half, somewhere on the order of forty percent, actually carried it all the way through to certification. Most of those are bronze. As an example, in Somerset County, the twenty-one municipalities, only eight are certified. We're obviously the smallest of those, so that in and of itself is a better than our gap, but now that we've actually made it up to the silver level, that puts us in a much more, yeah, applied air. There are very few golds, and you have to be a large city like Trenton, Newark. But, you know, it's just a handful of those. But to make a long story short, what I did was I handed out just to the councils of where all the work they've got to get into this. A small grid of, you're short on my number.
No, we are.
A grid of all the not only the requirements, but also what we achieved. So you can see in the table how many categories you have to cover. We did far more than is necessary, how many actions we did. And then I broke it down by categories of the various domains that make up sustainable Jersey, which is not just environmental, by the way. They take into account supporting local businesses, resiliency of the community, emergency management, a lot of other things that most people may not necessarily, you know, think about when they think about sustainable Jersey, they think about environmentalism. But to make a long story short, a lot of hands been into this. If I could just have a minute, because I think everybody needs to be recognized.
Three minutes under presentation.
But you've got a massive amount of help from the borough, so. And I'm sure I'm going to forget somebody, and it's sort of, I apologize upfront. But we got a lot of help from DPW, from John McDowell, Kathy Redley. They were instrumental. Burnsville Police Department really stepped up, not just Chief Frumay, but Sergeant Richard and Captain Gietel. As you can see from the grid, a lot of these things were related to emergency management. I got a lot of support from IT, Chris Tomato, Recreation about Mark Wick. Of course, you never mentioned anything about the borough, without mentioning our clerk. The Environmental Commission chipped in, not just the Green Team. We're sort of a subset of the Environmental Commission, the Green Team, so that, you know, Rob Wilson, Johann Wissenger, Joel Conover, Adrian Nowherback, and of course, the co-chair of the Green Team, Greg DeRante. I think got a specially carved out recognition for the amount of effort that goes into the farmer's market. So we had Matt Linglebush and Pat Kennedy Grant. And then the community garden. I gotta say, Rosalie Baker really bailed me out on this one, so she picked up a lot of the slack. And then there were other community organizations, it wasn't just all within Burnsville. So we partnered and got a lot of assistance from what was said downtown Burnsville, down Main Street. Raritan Headwaters, the Trails Committee, the Garden Club, which really helped out at our Green Fair over the April. And then a special shout out to the high school Green Team. Most people don't know this, but Burnsville High School actually has its own Green Team, which is very robust, maybe more active than we are, so hats off to them. But there was a lot of support from them. So I just wanted to acknowledge everybody who went into this. And we, our certification is good for three years. As you can see from the table, though, a number of the actions expire at the end of this year. That doesn't mean we lose our certification, it just means that if we were to reapply, we'd have to redo those. And so rather than wait for three years to go by, I think scramble to get everything done, our plan is to continue. Those that are going to expire at the end of twenty twenty-four, we'll make sure we upgrade them. And then we have a number of new projects on the docket that we hope will be of benefit to the community and we'll roll those out as, as we can. So thank you very much for your time, I just wanted to give everybody a pat on the back.
Thank you. You deserve a pat. Jeff, are you going to go to the luncheon, or do you know anybody that is? I mean, I will be there.
I'm supposed to get a knee replacement on Monday, so depending if I'm mobile, I can drive. I think it's the nineteenth.
Yeah.
You can take the picture.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Do you know, Jeff, just how many in Somerset County, is anybody else silver?
Yes, yeah. There are a couple several silvers, so I think it's happened now. I don't know off the top of my head, send you a report.
I'm just curious, I bet they're all bigger than us.
Everybody's bigger than us. Maybe the small, I don't know, and of course, it'll come, it comes out in November, but we may be the smallest municipality to be silver in the state. I don't know, we'll have to find, I'll have to find out.
Yeah.
There aren't many municipalities with seven thousand people roughly that can make it that way.
Yeah, no, congratulations, this is really impressive. I have another proclamation, and this is recognizing commemorating the seventy-ninth anniversary of National Disability Awareness Month. And mainly it's recognizing, I just want to publicly recognize the businesses in our town that employ disabled adults. And I didn't even realize we had them at Jersey Mites, Burnsville Shoprite, Burnsville CVS, and Burnsville Walgreens. All are supporters of disabled adults, so I think that's really, we should give them some credit, and I will send them each a copy of this proclamation. All right, we have minutes to approve. Oh. It's not on the agenda.
Well, he's kind of, he's kind of being in conjunction with the Tim's thing, but.
I know. Yeah, that way we can let you go home early.
I know why purpose here is talk about two reasons that are going to be voted on tonight. One is reference to truck routes, and the other one is the overnight parking ordinance. I think we understand the truck route issue. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't deal with tractor trailers on the road these days, and we have noticed too many of them, but there's not a lot we can do about it. When the incident happened on Anderson Hill Road, I think I was asked to take a look back and say, is anything to strengthen our truck routes? I didn't find a lot, and that's unfortunate, because trucks that are, no consultation with Jack will tell you, when they're traveling to and from to do business in Burnsville, they can pretty much use anywhere in town. They don't have to follow a specific route, even though we have a marked truck route. Those are for trucks traveling through Burnsville, and that includes Mount Erie, two oh two, Claremont Road, and Mendham Road. Those are clearly marked, so we thought about enforcement, making sure the officers are well aware of what ordinances we have on the books, so they're out there looking for people that are traveling through. And the other thing we talked about was signage. Went around town, made sure the signs were proper, made sure everything was clear to anybody driving a truck, and it seems very clear to me, I don't think signage is going to help, I think we have plenty of it for that problem. So looking at other ordinances, I came across one that I hopefully just give our ordinance a little more teeth. Our current ordinance provides for penalties up to fifty dollars for somebody who is traveling through Burnsville in violation of the truck route. My recommendation was to increase those fines dramatically for first-time offenders. I think the range is twenty-five hundred dollars to three thousand dollars. And the second offense would range between four thousand and five thousand dollars. So this is my opinion that if you don't give the ordinance some teeth and you don't hit somebody hard when they're driving through, I don't think a truck driver is going to be really bothered by fifty dollars in today's world. So I suggest providing a little more harsher penalties for any violations. Any questions on that, for sure, if anything makes sense.
No, thank you for bringing it up.
And then the other ordinance that we've tossed out and forth over the last couple of years is the overnight parking ordinance. Just to make it clear, the overnight parking ordinance right now currently only affects people parked on the roadways between November fifteenth and April first, between specific hours of two AM and six AM. The spirit of that ordinance that I think was probably generated over thirty years ago was in reference to snow and snow plows and having our operators from the road department coming in the middle by having the roadway clear. So they went ahead and had this ordinance, which is difficult from the police department's perspective when we're enforcing that ordinance. It's very difficult in a logical sense to give somebody a ticket on November sixteenth or something they are allowed to do on November fourteenth on the same sixty-degree night. So my suggestion, looking at our ordinance, is we already have one, and that's seven dash seven point three that specifies the overnight or any parking on street when snow is accumulated. That being said, the ordinances are kind of redundant, and I don't see, my suggestion was to repeal the overnight parking ordinance and let us focus on the snow ordinance when obviously it's snowing in the fall.
Yeah, that's right.
Without including other emergencies as well? Kind of freak weather events or hurricanes?
Yeah, seventy dash seven point two kind of goes for emergencies, so if the governor was to declare a state of emergency, we can post signs, and that would be under seventy-seven-two, but this is seventy-seven-three, his first note. I'm here to give him the name of the reports, we already have that.
Great. Great, any questions, Senator? Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, back to the minutes, a couple of minutes, do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? I propose. Okay, we now have an open session for any items that are not having a separate public hearing. So if anyone from the public would like to comment, please remember this is not a Q and A or town hall meeting. It's for you to take three minutes to share your comments. If there's anything you would like to spend some time discussing, please feel free to contact any of us or on the straighter, and we'd be happy to meet with you separately. So who would like to speak? John, it looks like he's getting up.
That is not special.
Yeah.
All right, John Berthony, Curious Six Locust Drive in the Borough. A couple of weeks back, there's a letter to the editor of Burnsville News. I'm a longtime resident of the Borough, I didn't think much about Mr. Lambert's remarks at the time, but I know that he's been having the best interest of bringing to him for many, many years. After attending last week's council working session, I'm now intending to agree with him. The council is a ton at its plate, is working to engage with the residents. Your hearing from many of us and others who have been memorialized and master planets, but you're not listening. Let me use an item prepared agenda, just as an example. On tonight's agenda is Resolution twenty-four dash two-two-zero, small change order to the upgrade, upgrade the electric service to be full of bearings in connection with the new lighting installation. It was discussed at the work of the meeting, but the service panel was upgraded to accommodate the needs of the pavilion that Borough was planning for the site. We did need to incur this fifteen thousand dollar cost to get the lights to work. That one decision, welcome to the legal, and within the bounds of the project, maybe Jack, you called it a tremendous change, change, or something to that effect. It included modification, yeah, you're in this modification, sorry. Shows a disregard for, one, the remarks made by Bob Graham at last month's meeting, council meeting. Really laid out alternatives in improving the existing facilities, and there was a suggestion that you reassess the needs for the pavilion. Previous suggestions from other residents explore tapping into existing water and sewer connections at the pool, which would also provide better access to the restrooms for the basketball and pickleball courts. In other words, two birds with one stone. The recommendations of Recreation's master plan, which prioritizes the needs for restrooms at the Polo Fields at Polo Brands Conference. An input from other residents in the surveys suggesting better coordination and agreement with schools and their facilities, which included exteriorly accessible bathrooms already at the middle school. Yes, there were recommendations in the master plan for better concessions, but that was across a number of facilities, not just the Polo Brands. Pavilions are rarely mentioned in the plan, noting a single survey response that seemed to be the basis of one of the initial pavilion designs. It had everything. But I have to ask you guys this, and it's not really a question. If the objective of improving the facilities is to one day bring in tournaments to the Polo Brands with the intent that it will provide additional revenue opportunities for downtown businesses, why are you looking to sponsor competition that will drive zero business down there? I just have, what, two seconds more? If you're looking to build up downtown and affect change in the residential commercial taxation ratios, make that the focus of your actions. The council has abandoned the current bids for the pavilion, but actions like this by this, by this administration would give anyone a pause. I would hope that the council is not yet to go around the process that is already started and continues to work and listen to concerned residents on this and other projects around town. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Anyone else? I don't see anybody on.
There's one person online, I don't see any, all right.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. We're moving on to a hearing open, I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four, two thousand and six. This, I believe, is going to be tabled. So do we need a motion to either table or continue?
Yes, if it's in the agenda, you can use the public hearing, the meeting on November twenty-fifth.
Oh, here, yeah, there you go.
Well, can someone speak if they want to?
We're going, we're going to continue it, so. Right, is it? Do we need to have the public hearing part, or will we continue for the next hour?
You should have a public hearing, I think.
Okay. So if anyone wants to speak on the this is for the ambulance? Seeing none?
I move to continue the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two thousand and six to the meeting of November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
And this is largely because we, it's going to cost more than we thought, so we're just looking at alternatives. I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four, two thousand and seven, and ordinance concerning filming and supplementing and amending Chapter Four of the Borough Code entitled General Licensing. And this is to make us film-ready, so if anyone wants to make a movie in our town, it sets all the guidelines for fees and where they can set up and what kinds of things they can do. Anyone wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. How was I saying that one?
Sure. I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four, two thousand and seven, I'll start a reading about this publish.
Second, your call, please.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Amero?
Yes.
Next, we have the introduction of ordinances, and this is the one that the chief was just referencing. I'll look safe, we'll do that one.
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two thousand and eight, an ordinance for filling seven dash seven point nine of the Borough Code, which prohibits overnight parking from November fifteenth, the April first, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and then a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM, Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Do you have a question?
Sure.
What happens between November fifteenth and when this goes, hopefully passes? If somebody parks on the street?
We'll figure this out.
Always there's no snow.
We already have snow ordinance, I'm not, we just, we'll just focus on that, we're not pushing.
Not this one.
This is, actually, this ordinance was about the discharge of hazardous substances, and I believe, I just would like to hold this off, I would like our JIF to review it, just to make sure that we have done everything in line in what they require. If you're okay with that?
Yeah.
If that's good, I'm just going to continue the public hearing, send it to everyone.
Well, it's not, it's an introduction.
Introduction, I'm sorry.
So if we can just put that out for November and just have the JIF run, verify that. The next is the penalties, and again, that you talked about, Jay, you want to do that one?
I move the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-ten, increasing the penalties for violating the Borough Truck Routes. Ordinants while traveling on a street or road having a grade in excess of five percent and supplementing and amending Chapter Seven of the Borough Code entitled Traffic, be introduced by title on first reading, published according to law, and then a public hearing is scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM, Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Chad, you want to do the answer?
Move ordinance twenty twenty-four, two thousand and eleven, northern state gaming, of course, in Burnsville Avenue, adjacent to why? One-one-four Lot One, which is outside the paved roadway and took the prior to the construction of the portable housing development at C.C. Preburners Avenue, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, all according to law, and a public hearing is scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM, Monday, November twenty-five, two thousand and four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. First thing, what did you do?
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey, adopting amendments to the sixty-five Marstown Road redevelopment plan, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public meet, public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM, Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
One second. Jack, would you just give us an update on what that is?
Yes, Mayor, this is the we previously vacated a triangle in front of sixty-three Burners Avenue. It's a fine board resolution, I'm sorry. Oh, sixty-five Marstown, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is by redevelopment, this is to amend the previously adopted for the Audi property.
Got it, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, I was thinking of the other one, which is the affordable housing, this is for the former Audi property. Right, yeah, got it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None, okay. Moving on to resolution. We have twenty-four, two thirteen, twelve through twenty-four, two thirty-five, twenty-four, two thirty-two, repelling, that's going to go on to November because they have not finished for that grant for the ABC license. I believe.
Well, I have a comment on twenty-three, five.
Two thirty-five. Oh, right, and also, I just want to add, two fourteen is, it just says approving items of business from our work meeting. Just to be clear on that, that was approving the Girl Scouts with their geocaching, then the Feeding Hands Food Country to move into the field house at Claremont, the nativity scene at the pond, the winter's farmer, the winter farmer's market, and the holiday parade. Those were all included in that one resolution. Jay, you want to comment on the?
Yeah, so in our working, and we've been talking about the library bathroom and the some of the changes that have been made and delays, and just wanted to thank Nancy Fran and our Borough John Portson and our Borough engineer Tony for the meeting on Friday. Will we ask for Tony to go back, and I guess Nancy maybe it's better if you outline out what he was able to get changed in the, in the contract.
Okay, so you had asked at that meeting that we tried to get him to increase over the five thousand dollars that he agreed to and liquidated damages. Tommy was able to get into a agreement, thirteen thousand for that. Then there were some things that worked on, like hooks on the back of doors and stools at sinks, and then there was supposed to be a tankless border here, but it wasn't tankless, so that's a twenty-five hundred dollar difference. So when you add, it came to seventeen thousand five hundred, so thirteen is liquidated, and the rest is a negative change already.
Yeah.
And Jack, thank you also.
Of course. Tony just wanted to be joined this morning.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Jay satisfied with the resolution?
Yeah, I mean, given what we've talked about in terms of the, what we have the ability to go after, I think it was a, a good compromise, and I think, again, appreciated what Tommy went after and got changed.
Yeah.
Hopefully, John and Fran.
Thrill.
Yes. Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Any other comments on? Any other comments on? The resolutions?
Um, can I, or just clarify on two twenty, the lighting? So when you first talk about the lighting, it's in phases, and the turf was the first phase. And some of the next phases that we talked about were lighting the path.
Um, I think lighting the path was put.
It's way.
Away, yeah, the next, the next is the parking lot, there's, I think. Um, six.
Word? Well, regardless, like, is, it was my understanding that you need the amps for that too, am I right?
Well, so initially, initially, there was a call for four hundred amps. And that was because there were a lot more lights in that they don't plan, which are since. We, we want, right, so, um, the amps that were. In purchase the lights were not gonna be enough for. The parking lot and the future pavilion, uh, which, by the way, you did a bond for a couple of years ago for the, uh, pavilion. I mean, it's a nine and a half dollars that you passed. Before I got here. So that was like in the works. Um. So, um, yeah, there's phase one and phase two, phase one, like one point five nine. Um, so. By spending the fifteen thousand dollars now. To get that narrative saves us.
Yeah.
So much, like, potentially up to six figures.
Um.
In getting the. Electives there. And when the pavilion is eventually built, and when the parking lot lights are put in, we just have to tackle off that, we're there, so it's so much less expensive than.
Right, oh, great.
Trying to do it, maybe.
That's what I remember talking about.
Yeah. We talked about, I think we talked about work.
All right, so do I have any motion to resolutions twenty four, two twenty one through twenty four, two thirty five?
Minus.
Minus two two.
I move to pass resolutions twenty four dash two twelve to twenty four dash two thirty five. Uh, without twenty four dash two thirty two.
One second. That's right. Your call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. McMeese, yes. Mr. Freddie?
Yes.
Mr. Ramalas, go ahead.
All right, mayor's report, uh, we had a meeting of the mayor's wellness committee, so, uh, we are still working on our. Uh, two big issues, which is seniors and mental health. I attended, uh, the New Jer, New Jersey Conference of Mayors Evening on the Bay, um, which was kind of the kickoff for that particular association. Uh, we had the visit from the president of Paraguay on the twenty seventh, which was really quite remarkable to have, uh, somebody of that. Stature be here in Burnsville, so thank you Nancy for all the arrangements and, and Anthony whipping that together, so we had like, what, four days notice that he was coming? So that was great. Uh, we had a ribbon cutting on the twenty eighth of September for Appri, which is a new, um. Children's clothing and accessory store, so if you haven't been there, please check it out, it's really cute. I attended the feathers and tweed fundraiser for the Somerset Hills Education Foundation. Um, I met with the farmers market committee and Madeline English trying to come up with a succession plan. For the winter market, so I think that's, we're making progress. Um. I met, I attended a meeting where Robert Wood Johnson was an introduction of their new C E O. And they're looking to be more active in this end of the county. It's just a busy ribbon cutting month, uh, Lily and the Rose Design, which is on Quimby in the, uh, Dr. Chang's building. Beautiful design studio, if you get a chance, stop in, I think she's even having a, um. Like a sip and paint. Event going there, I saw it on Facebook, so just stop in and say hi, she's really talented. Uh, then we did a ribbon cutting on the eleventh for the works. W E R K S, which is a men's salon, uh, right next to Bistro seven three. Uh, I had a meeting with Tom Blackstock about safety in town, uh, I spoke with the chief about it. Lot of concern about speeding and distracted driving, people not paying attention to people in crosswalks. And so I'm gonna make a little ad hoc committee to come up with, um, a safety campaign. To try and get the message out for people to. Be more attentive, uh, slow down, so, uh, so far I have Joseph Avellino, Tom Blackstock, and Michelle Pinkerton, who are gonna be on that committee. Um, I attended a board of directors meeting for the New Jersey Conference of Mayors. Uh, I attended an open house for Broadway Suites, if you haven't seen that. On Claremont, um, it's in the Essex, I think it's the Essex Building. It's a, an interesting concept where each little room is its own business of, um. I guess there's salons, facials, but each is independent. It's, it's a great concept. Uh, we did a ribbon cutting at Embassy E M S Fitness. Which blew me away what that does, I'd never seen anything like that, if you haven't seen that, it's, um, next to the movie theater, is it? Next to, where is it? Where Alcott Square used to be. Um, they, it's a twenty minute, you know, you have this suit with, like. Electrons in it, it's a twenty minute workout, it's really interesting, stop there and talk to them.
Now they're gonna do the X.
Oh, I, uh. Met with the third grade Girl Scouts, because they were working on the government badge, so we talked about local government and. They were just adorable. We had a, the Somerset County Business Partnership had a networking event here at the Bernie, which was great, because they don't always get to this end of the county. So it was very well attended and, uh, hopefully they'll do more out this way. I attended the Community and Crisis Prevention Coalition Meeting, which they do twice a year. Um, they gave us the results of their surveys on what students and adults in terms of usage of drugs. And what trends are coming, I heard of drugs, I never heard of before. There's a, what is it, the, I can't remember, it's, it's not, it's like chewing tobacco, but it's not, you just put it in your mouth? I've never heard of that.
Yeah, they're pretty cautious, they have a sunny place called baseball, so, yeah.
Uh, they've got a lot of the kids in school doing it now, so they're, that's one of their pitches. Please. Uh, we had a Main Street Board meeting, if you haven't met our new part-time executive director, Joe Oswald, um, stop in and say hi, he's usually here like. Two days a week, I think Tuesdays and Thursdays. Yesterday, uh, Recreation did a trunk or treat at the pool parking lot, was phenomenal, really well attended, just a lot of fun, it was. Gina was there, it was, I think the kids, you were there with, uh.
Me and the poo.
But it's fabulous.
Yes.
As usual. Yeah. Costume.
I like to do costume. Um, tomorrow, we have Jeff Bueller from the Business Action Center. Coming to tour downtown and give us some input on ideas for. You know, just kind of cleaning up our downtown and. Different ways to enhance the businesses, so that'll be good. Um. The last thing, I've gotten a couple of requests for, uh, from our local salons about. Um, permanent. It's like eyebrows, eyeliner, those kinds of things, which is kind of like tattooing, but not really. Um, we have, this had come up a while ago. And I think what, I talked to Jack, our attorney, and what it's considered is an ancillary service. So that as long as the salon does not change their basic. Main business, which is a salon. They will be, they are allowed to do ancillary services such as the permanent eyebrows. Um. My only concern, I think that is to make sure that they're, and I believe the health department has to regulate that. So that's the only issue is that, you know, they, they use the proper needles, that they're sanitized and all that. But as long as they don't change the sign to say tattoo parlor, they're good. All right. And that was all I had. That was enough. Nancy, you're up.
Um, the next, uh, government highlights, uh, is underway. Our draft constituency review and recommendations report is posted on the Highlands website for the required thirty day comment period. And then there's a couple of hearing on our petition for planning performance on December twelfth at those meetings. Uh, the notice and the link code that our community is, I don't know, so. Everyone, go take a look and make a comment. Um, the county agreed to our request to pay Claremont admin during the day and travel the road at night. Um, this is not happening until next year, in their, um. In their plan for next year. Uh, and if, they usually put out signs, only put out signs to alert the public of the dates they'll be paving. Because you asked if they'd send that letter, they asked, they, so.
They will?
They will handle the reminder to the impacted.
Wow, thanks for asking.
Yeah. Um, we have interviews for Recreation Director today, and we have additional interviews this week. Uh, and probably next week, so. And stay tuned. Uh, we should pick up again today. Today, uh, and then after this round, the next, the following round, it began on December seven. Uh, and a public service announcement, some people have been asking about how they can listen to. The agenda meetings, uh, which are also known as work sessions. And if people don't, um, know what that is, it's essentially the time where the council gets together and actually discusses. All the things that they vote on today, so, um, it's held in store. And it's an opportunity for them to sit around the table and have, uh, good involved discussions. Um, they occur on typically the third Monday. Of the month. And we began in February, this January is a little bit of a. A strange month of the dates of our meetings, but, um. And since February, hope we started holding them, audio recordings of the meetings. Have been posted on our website the day after the date, so I can post those. The next day. So they are accessible by going to the calendar, choosing the date of the meeting, and then clicking on media volume, you can listen to the whole meeting. And then finally, um. You mentioned the truck, uh, crash, and Chief mentioned it. Um, we just wanna give special thank you to all of the personnel agencies that responded to the truck accident, so. If you don't mind, I'll just read them.
No, go, please.
So, uh, police kind of work, we obviously have Burnsville Police Department, Burnsville Township. Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, Somerset County Sheriff's Office, the New Jersey State Police. Uh, from the Office of Emergency Management, Burnsville O E M, Somerset County O E M, and the Somerset Communications Office. Uh, EMS, Burnsville Fire Company, EMS, Mendham EMS, Atlantic Highlands EMS, and Somerset County EMS coordinators. For fire, we have, uh, Burnsville, Farfield, Bedminster, Keppac, Whitestone, Baskin Ridge, Somerset County Fire Coordinator. Springfield Fire Department, Millburn, Mendham, the U S I, which is the. U A S I.
U S I?
Yeah, no.
Name, no.
So that's, I mean.
They're very important, I don't remember what they're for, um, and the New Jersey Department of Fire Safety. Uh, Hazmat, Somerset County Hazmat, Elizabeth Daphne Fire Hazmat. Uni County Hazmat, Hunter County Hazmat, and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And finally, D P W, our D P W, and the Far Hills Bedminster D P W. Uh, also did a lot of work, oh, they all stayed very late. So just want to thank them for literally, uh, risking their lives during. Thank God this time.
Could have been.
Could have been a launch.
Yeah.
Um, and for all their, uh, time to win on day and the other.
Thank you.
But, uh.
Then, what does it speak for?
Urban Area Security Initiative.
Urban Area Security Initiative.
That's U S I.
U S I.
Was, was any fuel spilled, was it, under down?
There was, there was some, uh, there was some fuel spilled, uh, but there was nine. Thousand, I think there was nine thousand in the truck.
It was eight, eighty seven hundred.
Eighty seven hundred.
And this is not lost.
About two hundred gallons.
Right.
Well, so if that went into the car, that was trapped under.
Oh, got it.
And then they had a big hazmat, like, bag, drive back and catch the rest.
Oh.
And then they put up a big burn in case it did, yeah. And then they, then it happened.
Thank you.
It was a job well done.
Yeah.
Definitely. Thank you. Um, I need a motion to accept the departmental monthly reports?
Certainly.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, correspondence, do we have any? No. Uh, any unfinished business? Yes, we have two. Uh, we have holidays, we have, got some more information on that. Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Or do you want?
And do I?
It, it's a bit, we didn't know of the dates, and, uh, it's. November thirtieth is when the tree is supposed to be coming in, and then the actual, uh, holiday events are on December seventh. With.
And then four to six.
Four to six, because they're gonna set up related to that, right, around noon.
How does that correspond to the?
Parade, parade is the following Saturday, you were just talking about that, that maybe we should try and. See if the parade could be moved back a week, because it's kind of nice to have one. The earlier one is not for the little kids, and then the later one is.
Yeah, it was nice last year, yeah, the tree lighting and the parade.
They wrote in the senior. Um, what was that too? But they would do the lighting on the fourteenth. Or the fourteenth, if you wanna coordinate with the parade.
No, that may average.
Oh, that would be.
Yeah. They're gonna change their date, um, but I, maybe Main Street will. I'll see if they can't move it back.
It's good for people who can't make ones, but for me, it's.
Did we? That's true, that's a good point.
Because I can't make one.
Do we have to move anything, or do we move the rest? No.
Um, we did not, we just moved the other events that we had. So do we, and what were the date, when did this train have to come down, do you have a date on that?
Uh, I think January twelfth was the day. This is the first weekend after the, um. Orthodox Christmas.
Yeah.
It's the sixth.
The twelfth, even move by the twelfth.
Right, and so the sixth of the Orthodox.
So we need a, a motion to approve it, yes.
So motion approved, holidays on November thirtieth to January twelfth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and they can put their reads up as well. On the, I think on Thursday.
Yeah. Do you want some Samhain Thanksgiving, I hate to have to put them up before Thanksgiving. Uh, did we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Um, best practices, do we need to approve those?
You just need to discuss it, because when we submitted, then we have to give the date instead, we can talk about them, so, um, we had. I don't have the number, uh, like thirty seven.
Yeah, it was around thirty seven, yeah, high thirty, yeah.
Yeah, it's like thirty seven, thirty nine, forty two, yes, and I think we needed like thirty two. In order to go on full stating.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we had plenty of room, there was, uh, most, most high hat the question for, for, for informational purposes. Um. But, you know, we're fine.
We were good on all the finance ones, um. I thought the one thing we didn't, we had to know on was we don't have any, uh. Public chargers for U vehicles.
Right. Right, yeah.
We tried to get, but we didn't succeed. So, um, in a plan to replace all of ours with U vehicles. For the.
And, and then the plan is to put broadband in and, I drove the whole town.
Yeah, that, that's a little ambitious, I think, for us, for a little town.
Broadband meaning like. Public wideband or?
Public.
Like fiber?
No, like public for. I think for us to provide, the mayor, and just for us to provide. Uh, broadband.
Yes.
It's, I'm generally based on that this data has made. An effort to make sure that everybody's accessibility is like.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of questions on that.
There were a lot of questions, yeah. Yeah, a lot of the portable housing question, that was helpful, so.
Yeah. But, good job, we're in the high thirties, that's good. Um. Um. Waiving road repair fee, oh, this was, yeah. This was for, um. Oh wait, this is not what we talked about, what is this one? This is not what we were talking about.
This just came up on Friday, um, so as you know, sixty three Burner, you know, is one of the.
Or four.
So, uh. We. All of our, all of the tenants vacate September thirtieth, so we had to make sure the water was off, um, and. While Jack and I were on a call with R P Ms, the company who will be building, that we're housing, they talked about, that, you know, that house is gonna have to be. Um, demolished, so to demolish it, you need to have the water turned off the street. Um. So while we were turning it off, I talked to New Jersey Water and I asked if they could. Um, turn off the street and they said, well, we have to open the road, you know, we just paved it. But it has to be done, so, um. Uh, John gave them the street opening permit, but usually we charge two thousand dollars to, and since they're doing it for us. I said, I'll ask, but we would wait for that one.
Well, they actually, when they, they'd have to do it anyway to, for the construction problem.
Right, they have to, yeah.
Yeah.
So at that point, then they can do the infrared.
Right, and repair it when they do the construction, yeah. And it might slow people down on that time.
Yeah.
Uh, anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah.
We good? Yeah.
Yeah.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
I'll move to waive the uh, opening permit for the municipal water. Right.
With me?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did, did you want to talk about the, the trees or no, is that? This.
That is exactly.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Oh, oh, it's a contrast, yes, sorry. Um, we have another open session for anyone in the public who would like to be heard. Yeah.
Real fast, I knew I was gonna forget somebody, I just wanted to throw the record, uh, Community Crisis helped out with the sustainable journey. The other thing is, uh, the conversation about holidays, make you think about it, but they're gonna have a menorah lighting this year on December twelfth, Tuesday, December twelfth at five o'clock at the uh. Shopping Center, Burnsville Center.
So, great. The twelfth is five in the lot. Great, they have to come up here. And the little silver hats. At the, see the X on the door? Yeah, exactly.
Okay, Maria Nada, Minor Property, I just wanted to say that cosmetic tattooing is also for the lips, so it's the eyebrows. The eyeliner and the lip liner, and he does have to go to the health department after he gets approval from the town. And so does um, the other three salons that were. Okay, you don't need to know who they are, do you?
No, no, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will pause the open session. Okay. Um, we have executive, we do.
Move to. For during the year.
For the second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Always nice to have an audience.